Ready? All right. Good evening and welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee meeting. In attendance today, we have myself, of course, Chair of the Committee, representing the 4th District, Councilman Burnett, representing the 8th District, Councilman Cohen, representing the 1st District, Councilman Glover, representing the 13th District, and Councilwoman Porter, representing the 10th District. All right, and then, all right. So I want everyone to note, and we noted this earlier today, that we have new audio systems in the chambers. In order to turn on your microphone, you press the right button, and a light will come on, which indicates that the microphone is on. You don't need to necessarily move it too much, or really at all. It's much more sensitive than our previous microphones. And please feel free to turn it off if you can have a private conversation, so that we don't pick it up on the feed. This afternoon, the Committee will have a hearing on LO-23-0037, Youth Curfew, for the purpose of the Committee holding a hearing to discuss Baltimore City's youth curfew. And it was sponsored by myself, and of course, you know, the mayor announced, I guess maybe a month or so ago now, that we were going to enforce a curfew. And, you know, we've been thinking really long and hard about how to do that, noting some of the nuance in interactions with young people. So I called this meeting today, so that we can have a conversation about what that looks like, have our young people understand what to expect, have our parents understand what to expect, have our citizens really understand what to expect. So really looking forward to the conversation. I know you guys have been working really hard on this, and I appreciate the opportunity to have a briefing about this earlier. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, and I look forward to the discussion. So Director, are we going to start with you?
Yes, thank you, sir. We'll be sharing a presentation with the Committee today. Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the Committee. Shante Jackson, the Executive Director of the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, joined by a host of partners today. Specifically Deputy Mayor Dr. Derasa, Executive Director Deb Brooks, Chief of Staff Jessia Smith, and some folks in the gallery as needed to testify on some specific pages. We are excited to share with you all what the integrated strategy is that we have come up with to meaningfully address youth engagement this summer. We'll start with this first page. The initiative itself is called Be More This Summer, and is meant to engage our young people, to connect with them in ways that allow them and afford them the opportunity to truly be more, and to enjoy themselves this summer, while simultaneously ensuring that there is awareness, education associated with curfew management in ways that hold parents accountable, while simultaneously providing them with information around summer programming. We'll go to the next slide, and I will ask my partner, Dr. Brooks, to take this slide.
So, good afternoon, Chair, Committee members. Again, the mayor and city administrator tasked both MOCFS and MONC with co-developing an integrated summer engagement plan. And so that's what we are going to talk about this evening. Again, Be More Summer really is to engage and connect with our young people, really prioritizing and taking an all-hands-on-deck approach to ensure the safety for our young people, but really emphasizing the engagement piece, and providing spaces, safe spaces, for our young people to engage in activities. The summer youth engagement plan, again, I just want to emphasize, it's just one piece of the larger puzzle to ensure safety for our young people.
Next slide, please. And so, as we think about framing the approach associated with this work, we were hyper mindful of the fact that COVID-19, as a pandemic, still impacts our young people today, that there were lost opportunities around social development for our young people because of the limitations that COVID placed on them, leaving them quite often in spaces and places that were not necessarily structured and tailored in ways that would afford them ideal opportunities to engage with other adolescents meaningfully and socially developing, managing emotional regulation and intelligence. We also want to be really clear in sharing with the public and members of this Committee that our approach is also framed by what we have seen this year with regard to the uptick of violence associated with our younger population. And so while we're seeing a year-over-year decrease of homicides and non-fatal shootings across our city as a whole, we know that the same cannot be said for folks who are under the age of 18. And in fact, we've seen an increase year-over-year. A specific point that we want to bring to this Committee's attention and to the public's attention today is that youth violence between 9:00 PM and midnight this year, year-to-date, has increased more than 100% when compared to this time last year.
And so, again, the plan's goal, again, is really to engage and connect our young people. And so we were intentional with getting the voices from our young people and their perspective about what it is that they really wanted. And so we heard repeatedly from over 300 young people that they want to engage in spaces where they could gather and socialize, come together. Again, you heard Director Jackson say that during COVID, our young people really just had the opportunity to socialize on social media. And so they wanted spaces where they could come together, where they could socialize in a safe space, but also where they could get wraparound services and support, but also making sure that we provided those supports in a space where they felt safe. Knowing this, to reduce likelihood of our youth being involved in any type of criminal or unsafe activity. And so, again, really emphasizing the voices that we heard from our young people and providing those activities for them. Again, also, we heard from our young people really being engaged around wage-earning opportunities. And so you will hear on the next slide how we really partnered with a number of partners to ensure that we were able to stand up those opportunities for our young people. And so we received input from agencies, partner agencies, as well as business partners, community-based organizations, and residents. And again, you will see listed here where we engage with, again, over 300 youth at different schools, as well as rec centers, MoED around providing youth-based opportunities for our young people to earn wages. We are also partnering, Councilman Cohen, with Healing City to continue to hear from our youth voices. And so, again, this is just one piece of the puzzle to ensure that we're providing engaging opportunities that our young people want to be a part of. Again, reimagining our delivery of this. And so we're making sure that we have Youth Works that will provide 10 youth ambassadors to support our rec centers, and two ambassadors to record promotional videos to be able to let our young people know what curfew is and what it is not. We know that our youth actually engage and want to hear from their peers. And so we're ensuring that that happens, as well as partnering with Heart Smiles, that will be providing additional training for our youth. I really just want to call out that this strategy leads with structured out-of-school time for our young people. And so that is really the focus, and also making sure that we're providing them with services and resources that our young people have asked for, and to ensure that they have this to be successful. This plan also reduces law enforcement engagement, and you'll hear a little bit more about that through this presentation this evening. Our young people will also be able to engage with social workers to identify any potential needs that they may have or their families may have. And we will connect them with the appropriate resources as well.
And so when we talk about transportation, we've also streamlined some resource allocation here as well. When we think about summer programming, there are opportunities on the Teen Zone page on the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success that young people can register for, and some events that don't require registration. Many of those opportunities are in accessible rec centers, but also in places like City Hall, and Rashfield, and Drew Hill Park, and other locations around the city. And to the extent where we believe it makes sense, transportation is being provided to those summer programming spaces and places for young people. As it relates to transportation associated with curfew engagement, we will be partnering with Baltimore City Public Schools, and using four of their vehicles, two per location. We'll talk about where those two locations are. And they're going to be transporting young people to engagement centers. Each of those vehicles is going to be staffed with a non-law enforcement driver, specifically with a Baltimore City Public School bus driver as the transporter. A social worker will also be on that transportation vehicle, and a peer ambassador that you heard Dr. Brooks reference. No young people are going to be transported home by center staff. There will be repeated attempts, and we'll talk about this more when we walk through the process map itself, but there will be repeated attempts to reach a parent or guardian. And in the cases where we are unable to do that by the end of the night, referrals to the Department of Social Services will be made. We do have partners from DSS here with us tonight, in addition to partners from DSS, the state's attorney's office, and a host of others. As we think about locations, another way that we've demonstrated that we're streamlining the plan, that we're being really thoughtful about being effective stewards of city resources. And so while you see here a whole host of recreation centers that are listed and are accessible in our neighborhoods, you'll also see that two programming sites are also a part of the list of locations for summer programming. So the two sites are CC Jackson Rec Center, which is in northwest Baltimore City, and the second is Rita Church Community Center, located in east Baltimore. From a staffing perspective, for summer programming, leveraging Baltimore City Recs and Parks staffing, as we do every summer, in addition to that partnering with the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success around some specific offerings that are going to be new this year and/or brought forward from last year. And in addition to that, the mayor and the city administrator are going to be doing an all-call to all city agencies and to community-based partners for folks who are interested in understanding how they can show up for our young people. As we think about what the staffing model for curfew engagement looks like, we've got 10 off-site engagement team members. We'll talk about what that means a little bit more in a minute. The four drivers that I referenced a moment ago, in addition to the four peers. We'll also have 18 in-center staff. And you can see what the composition of those staff members looks like in the parenthetical that follows that bullet, and three school police officers.
So again, as we said, we're really being intentional about reimagining our delivery, standing up engaging opportunities and activities for our young people, ranging from music festivals to cookouts to a pop-up skating rink, right here out in front of City Hall. And again, the focus really is on engaging our young people and providing them with safe spaces to engage in these activities. Just a little bit about the youth curfew engagement centers. We will balance non-punitive engagement with accountability for our young people. So the centers will have age-appropriate spaces and activities. So we wouldn't have an eight-year-old in the same space with a 16-year-old. So even at the Youth Connection Centers, there will be separate spaces for age-appropriate young people. As well as curfew engagement hours will be weekends only, between 9:00 PM and 3:00 AM until the end of the school year. And then we will reassess after that time. As well as parents and guardians, as they have to come, when they do come to the Youth Connection Centers to pick up their young person, they will be provided with a palm card, which has, which actually has on one side the curfew information, but on the other side has a full list of the summer programming. Because again, that's what we want to promote, all of the summer programming and engaging opportunities that we have for our young people.
That palm card is one that I've shared with you all as Committee members when you walked in. The QR code on the side that highlights summer programming takes you directly to the Teen Zone website. So as we think about what engagement's going to look like around curfew management, really thoughtful about how we were going to be deliberate in taking a non-law enforcement approach. And I want to take a moment to thank members of this Committee who met with me and members of the team to talk about your prior experiences associated with curfew engagement, what your concerns were associated with how we were going to implement this, and asking us some really thoughtful questions to make sure that we program this in a way that didn't leave our children feeling criminalized. So as we think about curfew engagement, it's going to happen in two ways, in a static way and in a dynamic way. From a static perspective, what that means is that we'll have three static locations. So you heard me reference a couple of slides back. 10 off-site team members. Those 10 off-site team members make up the folks that will be at these three static locations, the Inner Harbor, Fells Point, and Federal Hill. From a dynamic perspective, making sure that we're responsive to information that we're hearing from the community, information and intelligence that we're getting from BPD with regard to mobilizing to areas where we know that there's going to be a pop-up or that we see young people beginning to gather. In addition to that, the dynamic portion of this engagement also includes making sure that we're traveling through neighborhoods, because we don't want to leave out those young people that are traveling either individually or in smaller groups. In more cases than not, they're more susceptible to harm and/or in need of social supports. This next slide really shares with you all the safety protocols that we've put in place as it relates to both summer programming and curfew engagement. Not going to spend a lot of time going through all of these protocols here, but we'll specifically call out the second protocol around trauma-informed care training for the drivers and the staff. We want to make sure that we've got folks who have been appropriately trained, appropriately screened, interacting with our young people, not just for their physical safety, but for their psychological and their emotional safety as well. This next slide probably looks really busy. I would offer that it is a more public-friendly version of our process map, one that is so much more detailed than this. But I'm going to take a couple of minutes to kind of walk through what the engagement process looks like, and what the folks who are part of the process will be doing in each of these pieces. So we'll start with the off-site cross-functional staff. These are the folks that are going to be in those static locations that we talked about. One of them encounters, or the group of them encounters, a young person, obviously in a very trauma-informed way, checking in to assess the young person. We are checking to see if there are any obvious signs of neglect or abuse. For example, is an eight-year-old out alone without a parent? If they are, we're calling DSS. If we don't have concerns about neglect or abuse, we are talking to this young person about curfew being in effect and encouraging the young person to begin to make their way home, asking that young person if we can facilitate making a phone call with them to their parent, if they need someone to pick them up, also letting them know about summer programming. And so team members will be equipped with a daily schedule of the summer programming that's happening on any given night, so that we can direct them via this integrated strategy to programming. Because at the end of the day, if they're going to be outside, we want them to be outside with us and safe. And then last but certainly not least, talking to them about the Youth Connection Centers and inviting them, if they are unable to get home, don't feel safe going home, and/or are disinterested in summer programming, to come into the Connection Center. And that's when transportation staff would kind of kick in here. So you'll see me follow the line along the right side of this diagram. So we see Engagement Center transportation staff arriving on the scene. As I mentioned before, a BCPSS bus driver is driving the vehicle with a social worker and a peer ambassador on the bus. These are the folks that are having the conversation around getting a young person to agree to go to a center. Really important to have young folks as a part of this work, because just like us, we, everybody tends to listen to folks that have a shared experience or perceived shared experience with them. And so wanting to make sure that we've got folks through Joanie Heart Smiles or through the Heart Smiles organization who have been trained and who likely have credibility in ways that adults simply won't have with other young people, and encouraging them to get on the vehicle. We will discuss with them at that time what young people can expect around security and engagement when they get there, so that there aren't any surprises, and we aren't catching our young people off-guard when they get to these centers, because they will be wanted, from a security perspective, to make sure that everyone there is kept safe. And then we would document that attempt. Coming to the right side of this diagram, we'll talk briefly about the Baltimore Police Department's engagement. But the next slide is one in which we'll invite our partner up from BPD to kind of talk to you all about the memo, so I'm going to be really brief here. You see them doing the same type of assessment that our off-site folks are doing. Does this child appear to be neglected or abused? If they are, they're calling DSS, too. They are not transporting a young person or detaining a young person. In fact, we are looking for officers to have very limited interaction with young people as it relates to curfew. And so in the last couple of areas here, when we think about onsite engagement, a young person walks through one of these center doors. They are wanted, from a security perspective. They are then routed to a team member who does a systems check. This is a BCPSS team member who has access to records where they can look up emergency contact information for a young person. A phone call is made to the first person on that card. If we can't reach that person, we call the second person. We can't reach the second person, we call the third. And we continue to do that in 15-minute intervals until we reach someone. If we don't reach anyone, at the end of the night, DSS is called. DSS has committed to having a 24/7 resource available to us during this time. If we do make contact with a parent or a guardian, we are sharing with them the location of the center. We're letting them know that there was a curfew infraction. We're telling them that they need to bring photo identification so that we can line up with who we just called and who's on the emergency contact information. We're hyper-aware that we might be dealing with some residents who may not be willing to share photo identification information, or who might not have it. If they bring a piece of mail that has their name on it, then that will suffice. When those folks arrive, we will capture a picture of that photo ID or that mail. We have worked closely with BSIT in creating a data-tracking system associated with what this looks like. And we will have this parent or guardian digitally sign out on an iPad with regard to that pickup. At that time, they will also get this. This counts as their first warning, right? So on one side of this, it very clearly states what the expectations are around curfew and what the consequences are around curfew infractions. Last but not least, is that if during the assessment of this young person, we've been able to determine that there's a need for some additional social service supports, we're not going to be having the conversation with a parent at 1:00 in the morning. Nobody wants to talk to you about social service supports at 1:00 in the morning when they picked up their kid. But we will be making sure that the appropriate providers follow up with that family in the coming days post that engagement. At this point, I'll turn it over to our partners at the Baltimore Police Department to talk to you all about Commissioner Harrison's memo.
I have to move this, sorry. Good evening, thank you, Chair Conway and members of the Commission. I provided the memorandum, and it, Erin Murphy, I'm sorry, Director of Government Affairs for the Baltimore City Police Department. I know that the memorandum was emailed, but I also provided copies to you all. The slide is brief, but we want to make sure that everyone understands that, you know, after consultation with the Law Department, BPD issued this memorandum. It includes some specific directives, but the ones that we want to make sure we highlight is enforcement of the curfew is not intended to lead to an unnecessary increase in interactions between BPD and the city's young people. BPD will not be taking any information from the youth. We will not be transporting the youth or arresting the youth for curfew violations. The majority of the interactions, as been explained, including transportation to the Youth Connection Centers, are going to be handled by non-BPD city employees or third-party entities. Officers will, however, be authorized to make arrests if they observe a criminal action taking place. And then there's more detail in the memorandum. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Last few slides here. Because it's important to us to make sure that all of Baltimore City is aware of both the summer program offerings and what they can expect around curfew engagement, we've been really intentional about a multi-platform education and awareness campaign. In addition to the palm cards that I've shared with you all individually, we've just hand-delivered 200 of them to the Department of Juvenile Services to make sure that when they're doing home visits and having conversations with young people and the families that they support, that they are able to provide this to them. We have printed 80,000 copies of these palm cards, 75,000 of which are being delivered to Baltimore City Public Schools so that they can go into all-school backpacks on Friday. The mayor will be delivering an e-blast. We've already completed a conference, a press conference, rather, and public service announcements will be going live shortly. We'll talk about what those are going to look like in a minute. Dr. Brooks referenced peer ambassadors in all of our recordings and promotions, because we want the FAQs to be addressed by our young people. The Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success have already begun to promote Be More This Summer, and will continue to do that through social media blitzes. And we've also engaged voices of young influencers in partnership with the Baltimore City Public School System, who's going to provide stipends for youth participation. We've partnered with radio stations 92Q and 95.9 WEAA and have recorded messages. We have used Dr. D.'s very well-known voice to record these messages that will be delivered on these radio stations. WEAA is going to have Dr. K. Witherspoon's message, very same message, because it's a public radio station, but being delivered on a regular basis at 10:00 and 11:00. 10:00 to let folks know it's getting to be time, and 11:00 is time. And so our young people, our families, our community members will hear this message frequently. Charm TV is also recording a spot with our young people for regular play. The mayor has invited all of our local channels to also share this messaging. For those that are as old as I am, you might recall, it's 11:00. Do you know where your children are? While the messaging won't exactly sound like that, because Dr. D.'s voice isn't that deep, I would offer that it is an encouraging message for young folks and their families to make sure that folks are at home. We talked about the Teen Zone page on MockFist's website, the printed collateral that you see with the QR code. Baltimore City Public Schools is also going to be issuing robo-calls between today and June 15th that will leverage Dr. D.'s voice. We're going to be partnering with the Office of Emergency Management. In fact, we delivered the text messaging script and Dr. D.'s voice between May 24th, hearing the theme here, I guess, between May 24th and June 15th, to make sure that this sweeps the city. Using the Office of Emergency Management means that we get to as many cell phones as this city has within its geospatial area. Youth Works is going to be partnering with us around promoting summer programming. And just as we encouraged some of you all during your briefings, I would ask you all again to partner with us here in sharing this summer programming information and any materials that you share with your constituents, so that every single family knows what's happening this summer. And then last but not least, MONC's curfew engagement webpage just launched a couple of moments ago. It does include an email address for folks who have questions, and there is a phone number associated with it for folks who are working on the team. And then the last few slides here. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on Slide 18 with regard to the budget, but I will say this. I think we can all agree that where you place your money is indicative of what you prioritize. A million dollars is being invested in curfew engagement for our young people to make sure that we are able to provide them with the level of wraparound supports that they need and that we're able to connect them to summer programming in ways that, at the end of the day, reduce the need for curfew engagement, because young people are hyper-aware of what's happening around the city that would be something that they would enjoy doing. The last slide here, every decision that we're making is one that's rooted in data. We have identified key performance indicators that we're going to be capturing at every given point, whether we're talking about those static locations, whether we're talking about at the point of trying to engage someone around getting on a transport vehicle, what happens when they get to the center, and what happens as they get signed out. We'll be using this data on a weekly basis to make sure that we're making changes to the program as we need to, figuring out what our start, stops, and continues are, in addition to anonymous surveys for parents and young people about what to anonymous surveys by, for parents and young people about what their experiences have been. Last but certainly not least, before we take your questions, thoughts, comments, is that we're actively working through a contract with Johns Hopkins University, I'm sorry, yeah, Johns Hopkins Center for Adolescent Health to complete a process and an evaluation of the impact that we've had over the course of this summer programming integrated strategy implementation. Happy to answer any questions that members of the committee may have. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We're going to quickly turn it over to the State Attorney's Office if there's anything you want to add. Awesome. All right, we'll open the floor to questions. I'll start with a few of my own. And I think I just want to sort of note, once again, I appreciate you, Director, for talking about the context behind why we're here. You know, we are seeing issues around youth violence. We are seeing issues around young people congregating late at night in public spaces that may also make it easier to facilitate violence, fights and otherwise. And so, I think keeping in mind what we're trying to accomplish is really, really important. It'll lead me to my next, my question. One, I do want to say, though, I had an opportunity just last week to talk to a bunch of students, students on SGA from a number of schools throughout the city, and they actually came to City Hall because they wanted to talk about exactly this issue. And they had a lot to say, and I'm sure you saw that from the engagement that you guys did over the last few weeks. You know, I think they all appreciated, our young people appreciated as well, that what we've been seeing late at night so far is large groups of young people congregating downtown is a problem, is problematic. I think they also appreciated this sort of nuance in approaching young people. They very frankly said, they feared that young people would just not listen. And so, I'll have a couple of questions, you know, following up on things that they brought up, and also thinking about the overall function of the program. Nonetheless, I'll jump into my first question. If you could, one more time, briefly walk us through an interaction with a young person. So, we're going to say we're downtown in a harbor. It's 11:30, and an officer, per se, comes up upon a person who is very clearly not 18. What happens? Can you walk me through that process?
I'm going to invite BPD up to lead any answering of questions associated with their members and happy to piggyback as necessary.
Good evening. Obviously, I'm not Command. I'm Director of Government Affairs. So, what I can tell you is really what the memorandum that was sent out is really more for the crowds that we've been seeing. BPD officers enact often with youth, and they do so, and they do so in a constitutional manner. So, of course, they're an inquiry, but as the memo stated, we're not going to be asking them for identification. So, you're only going off of the regular engagement and the community policing. The memorandum addresses what BPD is going to do upon what we're really talking about a lot with these youth curfews. It's generally not what we're talking about, it's more, and the memorandum talks about what they're going to do when they encounter a crowd for more than 10, which BPD looks at and believes to be minors. And one of the important things that they have been instructed to do is activate body-worn camera, contact their first-line supervisor, and contact the youth connection center, and inform both of the crowd's location and the size. And that way, we can get our partners involved and go from there.
I see. So, if, and then I'll hand it over, I just want to make sure I understand. If an officer comes across a single young person, probably not going to rise to an interaction by any means. If there is a crowd, you're saying there's a call that goes out to...
Sure. I mean, the memorandum addresses more of that problem, but I can say that, you know, our officers are aware of this program, they're going to know about this. So, I mean, our offices on the daily, if they see a child they believe is in need of assistance, we have partners that we can call. So, this really memorandum just addresses sort of the summer engagement, but it's going to be a very good thing, that they're now also going to have connections to the youth connection center. So, I think it's a positive.
Would it be safe to say that the officers are primarily serving as, like, guys on the street? We see young people congregating, or...
Sure. I mean, especially in this, you know, when you have the crowds, that I think has been the concern. BPD is also actively engaged and has been with monitoring social media and sort of trying to figure out where these situations are going to arise. We share that information with our partners. We've been very successful this year where we've had school police share things with us. We had an incident where we thought we were going to have a mandamin, and everybody partnered to try to make sure that that didn't turn into something that could have been, you know, awful. So, that's what the memorandum is more addressing towards crowd, but, you know, our officers are very aware of how to interact when they see a child that has signs of abuse in respect.
So, we have an officer downtown, foot patrol, comes across a group of young people.
Correct.
That officer, if those young people are not causing any trouble, per se, they are not doing anything illegal, that officer makes a call.
Well, only if it's, you know, if the officer, if they're not doing anything and it's not within the curfew hours, and the curfew situation wouldn't apply.
Right.
But if it's the, yes, if it's during that time period, and there's more than a crowd of 10, it's important that they reach out, and they're making a judgment-based call about whether or not they believe that the children are that, because we're not going to be taking IDs. But at that point, they'll call their supervisor, and they'll call the youth connection center, and they'll say the size of the crowd and the location.
Got it. Thank you. And so, at that point, it goes to the youth connection center.
Correct.
Right.
It does. It gets routed to the youth connection center supervisor phone number, which I alluded to Monty establishing and being something that we'll be sharing with our team members tomorrow. So, all of the folks that are going to be partnering with us this weekend as we start this, will be going through an orientation tomorrow that involves not only walking through the process map so that everyone's on the same page, but also trauma-informed care training. So, the call comes in to the supervisor. The supervisor is then the one that is making the call to the appropriate transportation driver based on the location. So, we beat the city kind of in halves. Given the northwest location and the eastern location, St. Paul and North Avenue, it will be the deciding point, right? So, if anyone is west of St. Paul and North Avenue, those folks would go to the C.C. Jackson Rec Center, and the others would go to the rec center at Rita Church Community Center. But the supervisor then calls the driver to say, "Need you to mobilize down into this area."
I want to ask a question, just to clarify. Who makes the interaction with the young people? So, an officer wouldn't necessarily make the interaction.
The officer would make no interaction with the young people. It is going to be youth connection center team members, either from the transportation crew, the off-site, or the off-site crew that's already there, if we're talking about the three static areas.
So, someone, someone would show up in a van, per se, and say, "Hey, group of 10 young people, we have a place for you to go." Is that generally how we're thinking about it?
No, not exactly.
I just want, I want to make sure we get it...
Not exactly. And partners, feel free to chime in here if there's anything that I missed. So, no, hey, we have a place for you. I would offer that what the script will look like for those folks is, "Hey, young people, how y'all doing? You know, we are with the youth connection center through the mayor's office. You all might have heard about..."
Clearly, clearly.
Not, not what you just said, right?
So, I just want to make sure I understand.
So, it'll be, "It's time for you to go home."
An interaction with someone of authority. I'm guessing someone that interacts with these young people has, they help or bring a uniform, something to identify them, is a credible person.
Thank you for that, yes. So, we have, in addition to creating magnetized signs for these school, these school vehicles that very clearly says BeMore this summer and is in alignment with the branding that we're using on the palm cards, we also will be issuing shirts for team members this week so that when they go out, they're very clearly identified as youth connection center team members.
Okay. So, I'll start from the beginning. Officer sees a group of 10 folks, it's 10, 11:30, definitely after hours. The officer makes the call, a youth connection center person comes out, they engage the group of young people, present them the option, and they refuse. What happens?
So, a few things happen if a young person refuses, but want to kind of come back a little bit around the engagement, because I think that this is really what determines whether or not we see refusal or not. How we engage our young people in ways that demonstrate a true interest in their care and their safety is going to be really important, making sure that they know it's time to head home. Do you, does anybody need us to help get you home? We can call your parents. Well, we can't transport you there. Do you need the utilization of a phone? Do you... Home safely. As I mentioned before...
I want to, that's a really important point. So, if the transport van pulls up, they won't take that person home. They can only take that person to the center.
The youth connection center. Yes, sir.
Got it.
If a young person says that, "Yes, please call my parent, my guardian, so that I can get home," and a guardian answers the phone and says, "I have absolutely no way to get there," a portion of this budget accounts for transporting that adult to where you are via Lyft and transporting them back home. So, we're trying to make sure that we're being really thoughtful there about, you know, some accessibility or some constraints that parents might have. We will not be putting a young person in a Lyft alone. Everything's going to be, we need to see a parent or a guardian that we've made contact with. The next thing that we mentioned before is, we're going to have the schedule of events around what's happening. And so, if you don't want to head home, did you know right up the street at X, Y, and Z rec center, midnight basketball is happening right now? Like, if you're looking for somewhere safe to go right now, that's the safest place for you to be. There's food, there's entertainment, you'll have fun, and you'll get a wristband that gives you an extra hour to get home after the event is over. And so, those will be the first three ways that we attempt to engage before we then say the youth connection center is also an option for you. If the youth, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, that's really helpful. So, essentially, we try to convince them that this is a better option.
Yes.
They still refuse.
Mm-hmm. So, a young person still refuses, that's when we leverage our peer ambassador, right? And so, remember that this engagement is happening with a social worker, and we do have our partner, Dr. K. here today as well. We'll be leveraging conversations with that social worker and ultimately with a peer ambassador, because as I mentioned before, I'm going to be more likely to want to try out a place if one of my peers says that it's somewhere safe for me to go. So, we will be leveraging those young folks to try to be that strong, encouraging force. It is our intention to be relentless. And quite frankly, we believe that the level of relentlessness will have young people dispersing, right? So, you either are going to get in the van, or you're going to go somewhere else, but you won't be here, is the intention. At the end of the day, though, if a young person decides that they are not going to go, I want to remind members of the public and members of this committee that the curfew ordinance does not, I mean, young people are not violating criminal code, and so, we are not forcing them to go anywhere. We are not engaging BPD with regard to detainment or arrests. But what we're doing is demonstrating that communal parenting and communal care can exist and providing them with opportunities to embrace that in multiple ways.
Got it. So, a youth engagement person goes out, we talk their ear off until they finally say, "Hey, look, it's fine, we'll go." They come to the center, and what happens there?
Yep. So, they come to the center as, so, before they get to the center, as a part of this, "Hey, get on the bus with us." Once a young person agrees, even before they get on the bus, we're telling them what they can expect when they get to the center, because again, we don't want surprises.
Sure.
You will be wanted. It is important to us that we keep people safe. It's our expectation that if we're dealing with any young folks that have any sort of weapon on them, they'll probably be walking home at that point, right? Or leaving the area at that point. They will have been seen by multiple people, and they will probably not get on the bus, but we believe that that means that they probably will be heading home at that point. For young folks that do arrive at the center, they would have been told what to expect when they get there. They'll get wanted for weapons, they'll get checked in with a Baltimore City Public School person so that we can do the look-up on who they are. If we cannot find an emergency card record for them, we'll be asking the young person, "Who is the person that is your parent or guardian at this point that we can be reaching out to?" And we'll make the calls as appropriate. Well, also, and just a couple of notes, so after that process happens and we reach a parent, or we're in the process of attempting to reach a parent, the young person isn't just sitting there after that assessment, period, right? We are providing spaces and places for recreation, without making it so fun that you believe that this is the after-party that you come to on a regular basis, but also not making it so dull that young people just feel disconnected and disengaged. We will have food there every single night for young folks that may or may not be hungry, and we will also have areas for young people to sleep. And so, if they're waiting for their parents to come and pick them up, we will make sure that they are well taken care of in age-appropriate ways.
How will we know a young person's age when we approach them?
We won't, right? And so, just like we heard our partners at BPD say, I'm not walking up to a young person and saying, "Show me your ID." We aren't doing that, but we are using educated guesses with regard to what a young person's age may be around evaluating them. I suspect that if you've got someone that's over the age of 18, they're going to be saying, "I'm over the age of 18," and hopefully has some form of ID on them to prove that they are over the age of 18. But we won't be able to verify age until we get folks to the center, or on the way to the center when we're having a conversation in the transport van, right? So, that might be another space and place during this process that we could uncover age.
Sure. And final piece, I'm thinking about this kind of as we go, because you're bringing up a lot of really good things here. When a young person does agree to take the transport van, do we, are we offering some opportunity for them to reach out to someone so that they, for instance, they may be out somewhere and their parents know they're out there, and maybe they just stayed a little late and lost track of time? And if their parents find out that they're in some other place on the other side of the city, that might be a shock. So, how do we make sure that those young people have an opportunity to notify?
It is interesting that you bring that up, because on Slide 5, this is one of the things that we heard directly from the police commissioner as one of the goals that we wanted to uncover here on, in bullet number four, determine the root causes of non-compliance with the curfew mandate and the travel-from-home distance, because we are literally seeing folks go across town, right? And not stay in their neighborhoods. And so, we are looking to unearth the reasons why young people are traveling so far. And at the same time, if a young person has a phone, we're not going to stop them from calling their parents. I would offer that that goes back to that initial contact where we say, "Hey, want to make a call now before you even get in this transport vehicle?" But we wouldn't be stopping young folks from making calls to a parent or a guardian.
Yeah, that was one of my questions further down, and so, since we're on it, I was really curious how we are thinking about the two locations and how that proximity has an impact on how far young people will have to travel, one, to get there, and two, to get home. Do we have any data or any indication for the areas where we're focusing where the young people are coming from, or are we, do you have any sense?
So, unfortunately, we have no data that we were able to recover from the last two attempts or last two activations of curfew. The data that we have dates all the way back to 2011, where we saw almost 700 young people be engaged at community centers, almost 40 of them being repeat visitors to community engagement centers. That data did not account for travel distance from home, though. And so, we're intentionally tracking that this time around as it relates to the capture of the identification of the location that we're picking a young person up at and the identification of that home address based on the photo identification and/or piece of mail from that parent or guardian.
Got it. All right. So, we're going to get through the...
Partners, let me know if I missed anything.
We're going to get through, we're going to get, I want to make sure we get through the full scenario, and then I'm going to hand it off to my colleagues. So, officer notices there's a group, officer makes the call, an outreach person shows up, talks to the young people, eventually convinces them to hop in the transport van to go to one of the two recreation sites where there is food and games and basketball and all the amazing things that young people should love. You hear that, young people? So, it's the... So it's the end of the night. It's 3:00 AM and we are shutting up shop. What happens?
So I would offer that we aren't looking at 3:00 AM.
Okay.
We're looking, right, so while the shop shuts down at 3:00 AM, we're looking at 2:30. If we haven't been able to reach a parent or guardian by 2:30 after 15-minute calls going through this cycle of a list, we would have already engaged DSS potentially earlier in the night to let them know, we're going to need your 24-hour person to start to make their way. Or at least to prepare them to begin to make their way. And at 2:30, we'll make a final call to you to let you know whether or not we need to deploy folks or not. Our partners from DSS are here, so happy to defer to them around what it looks like after a DSS referral is made and what happens with the young person. Oh, I, I think Mr. Hayes just stepped out.
Okay. We will just go ahead and hold off on, on that portion when he comes back.
But that's what happens if, if we are unable to make contact after repeated attempts.
Okay. All right, I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues. I'm going to, I'm going to start to the right and work my way. Councilman Glover.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is, what, are we, the social workers, are they going to be on the buses? Or we have, we have vans or buses first? What do, what do we transport them in, van or buses?
Vans.
Okay, vans.
That are driven by school bus drivers.
Okay, so 15 passenger vans and we have two vans, you said, right?
We have four vans across two sites.
Okay, four vans. And if we, if we're encountering a bunch of young people like at the Inner Harbor, how do we transport or how do we even engage hundreds of kids to get them to jump into those 15 passenger vans? One of the four vans? And engage them and maybe come into the rec center or wherever we're taking these individuals at? How do we engage that many young people?
Thank you for your question, council member. And we'll ask partners to chime in here. As, as we think about what we know to be large crowds that gather in those three static locations that I identified, I don't believe that we would expect hundreds of vehicles or hundreds of young people to accept our offer to get into the vans, right? It is the reason why the protocol is letting folks know, even as it's getting closer to curfew time. And so our on-the-ground team is there at eight, not 11. Because under the age of 14, curfew time starts at nine. And so if we're able to use our best judgment to identify groups of young people that look to be under that age, we're strongly encouraging them from eight o'clock to nine o'clock to start to like, this, this time to start to work your way home. Do you need a call? The same thing would begin to happen in the 10 o'clock hour for those folks that are, you know, 14 to 17 years old. So we would still follow the same protocols that I mentioned to the chair around the sequencing and how we would have conversations with folks, time to go home, do you need help making a call? Did you know this is happening up the street? This is happening over here? Which side of town do you live on? Did you know over at C.C. Jackson right now this is going on? Did you know at City Hall, there's a week of roller skating like happening? And so it's, it is critical that our, our team members that are out there know what the events are that are happening around the city because that's what we want this integrated plan to result in. Like a deeper level of awareness of our young people of, we're doing all the things out here. The things that you told us that you wanted us to do and not the things that we made for you. With regard to inviting folks into vans, I would offer that this would be an audible, right? That the supervisor would call, I'm going to need all four vehicles down at the Inner Harbor right now because we've got X number of young folks that have said that they want to be transported. I need two of the four vehicles. And so we want to make sure that we afford ourselves the level of flexibility here that while we've got two vehicles dedicated for each of the two sites, that we're doing what's in the best interest of our children.
And, and trust me, I wanted to work. I want to see that it worked, but I just cannot imagine me, like, at one point in time, I was a young person and we had those individuals that was pulling us in this direction. And, you know, I might have said wanting to do whatever it is that we wanted to do at that particular time. And I just, I just, I see as if, again, I want this to work, but I still see these young people not obeying. I don't, I don't hear the young people saying, I want to go to the rec. They're not excited about going to the rec centers. What's, what's fun to them is what's going on in the streets. And these are the dirt bike riders, these are the young kids that are on the scooters or whatever down at the Inner Harbor. Those things to them are fun and that's why they're participating in those things. So when you come with, you know, here are the vans, and I know these are great ideas, but here are the vans. You know, we're going to take you to this safe haven. They, that's not what they want to hear. So I, I'll, I'm excited to know that you guys want to do that. I'm waiting to see it come to life, but I just don't see it as a young person at one point in time in my life that when, you know, older adults came to me and say, hey, Tony, come on, man, we want to do it this way. And my crew wanted to do something totally different, it just wasn't there. Not that we did things that was destructive, but we just didn't want to be a part of what it was that the city may have had going on at that time when they had a curfew in place like years back then. I also see that, I don't see how we're not having our young people engage with the Baltimore City Police Department as well because I think that's where the disconnect lies. We need to have our young people, not saying arrest our way out of this because we can't do that, but we need our young people to no longer be afraid of the police. So we need to have like all partners like there and not have it where, you know what? The police is not present. Because right now, what we're saying now is that when you see the police, they, they shy away from the police because they think police are the bad people right now. At one point in time also, do we engage or we have the social worker engaging with our young people? Because I know you have folks on staff to kind of talk to these young people, but the professional, the social worker that could kind of like understand and kind of meet them where they're at. When do that person step in to play their part?
Thank you for all, all your questions. I want to make sure that we address all of them. I, I think that while I understand your position, I've got a slightly different one about what it's going to look like when we are successful and not when, not if we're successful. And a couple of key points here. As a part of the orientation that folks will go through tomorrow, one of the key things that I found in being able to sway anyone, whether we're talking about a young person or an adult, into understanding why the position that I'm taking is probably the, the wiser one is to make sure that I understand who the influencer is in the group. And there are ways that you can very quickly assess who the influencer is, especially amongst young people. And so making sure that we're having those conversations very intentionally with the, the person that's going to, at the end of the day, make the decision for the entire crew is going to be extremely critical here. We're also not saying that we're going to get it all right on Friday night. It's one of the reasons why we're having change management meetings and check-in meetings every single week with partners to determine what changes and engagement need to look like, if we need to mobilize more resources, less resources, and making sure that we're calling the audibles on the play. The last point I make, and then I'll turn it over to Dr. Brooks here, is that I want to be really clear that BPD is a partner here. And because they aren't transporting our young people doesn't mean that they won't have conversations with our young people. What we want those conversations to be are positive ones. We don't want there to be any perception associated with an interaction being negative or being one that leaves a young person feeling criminalized or targeted, but one that demonstrates that BPD is exactly what it is, a protector of this community and one that has our young people's best interest in heart, in mind. And so it is not that I don't expect officers to check in with young people and say, hey, how's it going? You heading home now? Like just general conversation. Hey, did you know this was happening up the street? That's general conversation. That has nothing to do with officers detaining people. It has nothing to do with officers criminalizing behavior. And we fully expect that BPD is still going to carry out their duties associated with interacting with anybody that is committing a criminal act. Because that's their job and not the Youth Connection Center's jobs. And making sure that we're very clear about what those roles and responsibilities look like. Dr. Brooks, did you have something to add?
I did. I just want to say I appreciate your comment and that's why we were really intentional with speaking to our young people and all of our young people to be able to hear like what some of the concerns or questions that they had. And even hearing from some of the young people and some of them were saying, we don't want any whack activities. Like, these are the things we want to engage in. And so we were really intentional to make sure that we provided opportunities and engaging activities that they wanted. So in, in having those conversations, we provided a wide range of activities that they wanted to engage in. And we made sure that it was across the city. Because we did hear from some young people to say, well, I live on this side of town. And if you have all the activities on the other side of town, how am I supposed to get to those activities? So we made sure that we provided access for our young people and we made sure that we provided those activities that they could engage in. Because what we did hear repeatedly is there's just nothing for us to do. We don't have anything that we want to do. Or you all come up with ideas and activities that we just don't want to engage in.
So can you define for me, what are, what are whack activities that they do not want to be a part of?
Um, so.
What activities you have in mind?
Yep, so we heard repeatedly like, yeah, we don't want to just, what you said, sometimes we don't just want to go to the rec center, but we want to go to the rec center and do these things. So as our partners in rec centers stood up, midnight basketball. Like, they really wanted that to be a part of what they were doing again. We heard from some of our young people, like, we used to be able to go to the roller skating rink. And so we, we are standing up the pop-up roller skating rink right outside of City Hall. We also, for a week, absolutely. We also heard like, you know, the music festival, like to be able to have a DJ. So we will have those type of activities as well. So we really were intentional in listening to what it is that they wanted so that we could provide those opportunities for them.
I think the one thing that I would add, and I think you touched on this, Councilman Glover, around when would a social worker become involved? And so I think Director Jackson outlined who would be on the vans. And that's inclusive of our partners from the University of Maryland School of Social Work, right? And so you've heard us talk about how this model is different. Yes, law enforcement may be present calling Youth Connection Center staff, but the folks who will be actively engaging, and we keep saying engage because that's really at the core of this model, will include that social work support from University of Maryland. It'll include that peer ambassador and again, the bus driver. And so that social worker who will also have had, you know, similar training to what's being provided can, can help make calls around what additional supports might be needed. One of the things that we really wanted to do with this model, yes, engage them in programming, but this is also an opportunity to identify if there are other resources or social supports needed. And that's where I think our social work partners, as well as others in the center that may engage with the youth, can really help us connect those young people to those resources.
And again, I am fully in support of the program, but I'm on, I'm in the trenches, I'm there. And what I'm saying is that, you know, even when it comes to having a social worker on the bus, we, say the bus was at the capacity of 15 passengers, well, actually 12 passengers. Because you have your social worker on the bus, you have your mentor, I guess, on the bus and the bus driver itself. So we have 12 people that we're transporting. And we have that one social worker engaging with these young people that's on the bus. Like, and we're dealing with, again, I'm thinking about the massive amount of, of kids we may have. We don't know until, I mean, this is a, we're, we're working it out, but we may have. Like, and I've done, I've been a part of like mental health case management and things of the nature. And I'm wondering, how do we address these individuals that may be on some type of substance as well? You know, we're dealing with those individuals as well. So I know it's a start, I want to see it work, but I'm just trying to get to the point where you guys can really dig deeper if you, you know, haven't dug deeper with just some suggestions, like, you know, how would you guys go about?
No, we appreciate that. It's worth mentioning that social workers aren't just going to be on the bus, they're also going to be in the center. So they will be in the location so that our young people are getting individualized attention and supports there as well. Because to your point, I'm, I'm not even a young kid anymore and I don't want to have a conversation about what's going on with me on a bus with 14 other people. So, you know, I get it. And that's why in addition to having social workers on the bus, there is a plan to also have them in the sites.
And the last thing I want to say, and, and again, I keep mentioning over and over again, I want to see it work. And I just know that, you know, my fiance, she's a social worker. First of all, I'm on City Public Schools. And I visit a school sometimes and dealing with even a small amount of kids is, it's insane sometimes. And I'm just thinking again about the massive amount of children that we have in Baltimore. I want them to get the services because I don't want to see another young person getting hurt or killed in the city of Baltimore. But these are just some of the things that I see and I just hope that we really, really pay close attention and we can get more resources to help you guys. Please get it because we're really going to need it. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you all for.
Thank you, Councilman.
The one thing I might add, and I, I think Director Jackson talked about this a little bit, very much appreciate, I think, your feedback and what you've observed. While we have a plan for the launch, know that there will be regular internal evaluations of how the program is going, right? Like, yes, Hopkins Center for Adolescent Health will do kind of the post-evaluation retrospectively, looking at the data. But internally, there will be examination of how is the program working? We'll be getting feedback from participants who come to the center. And so there will be opportunities to iterate and improve upon things if the data suggests that we need to.
And I could make one suggestion also. If, if you guys, even Morgan or maybe Copden and, and some of those, you know, young social or, or young students that are becoming social workers, if we could have them engage with some of our young people, folks that, that look like us, you know, folks that can meet them where they're at. They live in these neighborhoods as well. So I think that'd be another idea, I think, that, or another suggestion that you guys should look into, either like Copden or maybe the Morgan State University that has those programs, you know, already available for those social workers. I think that could be a great help to us as well.
Yeah, absolutely. Very much appreciate that feedback. I, I will call on my partner, Dr. Kyla Legacriol from the University of Maryland School of Social Work because she has been so helpful in identifying individuals who are culturally competent, who work with young people so that, that it won't just be any social worker. She's been very intentional in helping us identify people who, who want to do this work. So I think that, that to your point, that is critical.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman. I want to follow up on a sort of thread that you, you tapped into very specifically around transport of the young people and liability. Having a bunch of young people on a bus, I think that was a really good point. Have we thought much about that piece in, from A to B, how we make sure that happens safely for the young people?
So I would offer that, yes, from a planned perspective, we wanted to make sure that this is something that we not only thought of through a lens of equity and trauma-informed care, accessibility to our young folks, but also liability to the city as it relates to that. Happy to bring the answer back associated with that. I see that the acting city solicitor wasn't able to make the hearing, but we, we have been in frequent conversations with the, with the acting city solicitor on a whole host of issues surrounding this.
Yeah, I think that would be really helpful from the transportation perspective. Certainly within our rec centers, it's something we are always thinking, we know that. Transportation is a little bit more nuanced, so. Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I did have a few questions. First, I appreciate you all providing us with the preliminary briefings of this program. I neglected to ask two particular questions related to young people and criminal activity as it relates to guns. How are we monitoring that we're not putting other young people in a, in a dangerous situation, transporting these individuals to our rec centers? One of the things that I wasn't clear on as I kind of really thought through the program was if there would be any type of public safety initiative at the rec centers to keep the children safe? And also what that would look like from, you know, transporting the people, the, the young people that are out there that are doing illegal activity. We are essentially exposing other young people to their criminal activity. So if you can speak to that protocol and process, that would be great.
Yep, so before a young person even gets on the. Yep, so before a young person even gets on the bus, after they've agreed that they're getting on the bus, the social worker and the peer are saying to them, here's everything that you can expect when you get to the center. There's going to be food, there's going to be a space to recreate. If you want to rest, there's going to be rest there. And you need to know that as soon as you walk in the door, while this is a non-law enforcement type of engagement, there is going to be a team member that has a wanding device that is meant to be used to keep folks in the facility safe. And so Monsey has procured those. We are going to make sure that every single young person knows before they even get on this bus, what's going to happen when they get off the bus and they walk in the door. That's the very first thing that's going to happen. Before we look up parental information, before we do screening for social service needs, we're making sure that everyone in there is safe.
I appreciate that. And so that only addresses the issue of guns. What about, like, illegal drugs that are happening? I guess I'm really trying to get to the safety protocols that you all have in place that will protect those young people once they do get there.
Yep, so happy to jump to that slide here. No, no worries. It, we obviously haven't specifically listed, you know, the potential for illicit drugs and/or illegal substances to be transported in the facility. Because we aren't padding our young people down, we aren't asking our young people to turn out their pockets.
Of course.
We aren't doing that sort of thing. But as we think about, number one, age-appropriate spaces.
Uh huh.
That's a safety protocol right there with regard to making sure that we don't have folks that are eight, 10, 12 years old in a space with a young person who is potentially 14, 16, 17 years old. In addition to that, each of the rooms is going to be staffed. And so our young people aren't going to be left alone and happy to have Chief of Staff Smith kind of talk about this. But we literally just walked through with Wrexham Parks and the Director of Wrexham Parks these two locations, identifying areas for the younger folks and for the older folks that will be brought here. Having conversations about what the staffing model was going to look like to make sure that folks are safe. And even getting information from Wrexham Parks with regard to their safety protocols that their directors implement when there are issues. But Chief, when you're ready?
So for Wrexham Park staff, we deal with young people in these spaces under these circumstances every day. So our center staff are trained on what to happen if they encounter an unusual critical incident. So they work directly with their supervisor, so all of our teams work 24 hours. We have a risk manager we also will deploy. And then most recently, we have been having the support of MS4 to do some additional security at our rec centers. So we feel very confident in our staff, particularly because they deal with these young people all the time. And you would imagine that those people who are signing up for these additional shifts, right, that they're going to be from 9:00 PM to 3:00 AM are those staff members who are completely dedicated to the safety of our young people. So similar to being very intentional about the staff that's going to be in the social work positions, our people who are signing up for these positions, they are the people who have, not to suggest all of our team doesn't have the heart for young people, but there's a special type of person who will volunteer to work a shift that's overnight. So we're confident that our team knows that. In addition to that, we are in the middle of trauma-informed care intensive training for the entire agency. So we're, everyone in our agency has been through at least three trainings now. So the way that we're approaching young people feels a little bit different than it did a year ago. So they're able to talk to young people in a much more intentional way and to kind of hear their needs. So our expectation is that they will liaise with the social workers there if they're able to get something out of a young person or if they see signs that may not have been revealed on the initial screening. So we are confident that our team will be equipped to operate in that space because we, from our after-school programs, summer camps, and midnight basketball and canoeing, we work with our young people in various settings. So we're confident the team will be equipped to deal with them and have activities that will be appropriate for those young people that show up. Because we might have a night where we have all 15-year-olds.
Yeah.
And then maybe one seven-year-old that, you know, for whatever reason is there. So I think we, our staff is skilled enough to be able to meet them where they are.
Thank you. Excuse me, and what is the staff to team member ratio?
We have two rec center staff that will be actually programmatic staff.
So one for the entire rec center?
Two.
Two for the entire rec center? And what's the capacity that each rec center holds?
Well, the sites that we have are larger regional sites, so ideally hundreds of people could fit in those sites.
Yeah.
Because our approach is not to bus or transport people in. Our goal is that people, the young people, through the engagement with the folks in the transportation van, will go home. Will seek shelter, will go to a safe space. So the best-case scenario is that we have some young people that come. We're able to keep them entertained, safe, and fed until their adults come to retrieve them.
Okay.
And Councilwoman, just as a reminder, there will be a total of 18 staff members across the two sites. And so it's not just Wrexham Park staff that will be there. There will also be mental health clinicians, Baltimore City Public School staff. And other team members will also be on site. So we're talking about roughly nine per building, yes.
That, thank you for that, because I was like, oh, my God, one person for the regional sites, okay.
No.
That definitely helps out a lot. My second question has to do with the vans that we are using. One of the things that came to my brain as I talked to some human trafficking professionals was really ensuring that the young people know that the vans are actually in use, they're city-sponsored. How are you all kind of adapting to the known threat that we have, particularly within the city as far as young people, with making sure that they, you know, identify a city-sponsored van?
Yeah.
Yeah, how are you all, what are the protocols in place for that?
Yeah, I would say, you know, as the agency director responsible for the city's human trafficking initiative, this sits very close to us making sure that our young people feel like they can get into a vehicle that's safe. And we had a few conversations about what this looks like. It's one of the reasons why we're using Baltimore City Public School vans. They literally clearly are identified with the Baltimore City Public School logo. In addition to that, making sure that we've got the Be More This Summer logo on both sides of the van. The Department of Transportation has printed magnetized signs for us to be able to do that. With regard to when we engage, as I mentioned before, staff's going to have on shirts. And those shirts will clearly identify them with the very same logo and the Youth Connection Center team member identification mark on the back of the shirts. This is, I'm sure, something that will come up as a frequently asked question that our young, our youth ambassadors are going to be doing promos about, so that young people will likely become more aware of this than elders or parents like me would, because it's going to be on social. But we believe that with the distribution of these palm cards and backpacks, folks are going to start to get more and more familiar with this Be More This Summer logo. And we'll make sure that is a part of the script that we're providing to folks, that we're using very intentional language. Even if it means if you are uncertain about whether or not you want to get in this van right now, here's a phone number that you can call in order to inform your decision, right? And one that routes to someone that is credible around what that looks like. And happy to take any recommendations that folks may have along these lines. But making sure that we clearly identify these vans is something that was important to us. We know a few years back, like, white vans became a whole thing in another administration. And so just being really thoughtful there around how we clearly mark and identify them.
I appreciate that. I just want to make sure that, you know, from a BPD perspective, that when we are, when we are having these identifiable vans, we are not only using logos that are not reproducible, but they also have some sort of, some sort of, I don't know, just to make them, make, you know, make them not reproducible for any type of van. Can you all, can you speak to that?
I'd like to, and I agree with you. They're going to have to be identifiable, but we, BP does not have any, we're not a part of the vans. But I completely agree, just from a law enforcement perspective, we're going to want to make sure that they're clear. But I do know that the, that they're planning on making an identifiable logo.
We already have. They've already been completed, again, by the Department of Transportation and delivered to my office. I would also offer one other point, that when we have officers reaching out for the deployment of these vans, the officer should be there when we get there. And at some point, we'll start to gain familiarity with the staff that's moving in and out of these spaces, because many officers operate on the same shift, right? They pick the Alpha Bravo Charlie shift. And so some level of familiarity around what the staff members should look like as we approach crowds of young people.
Didn't mean to interrupt. That is part of the memo, which is that officers do plan to make sure that the people that are driving the vans are in fact who they say they are.
Okay.
So that is a part of the memorandum.
It is.
So we will be making sure that they check IDs. Obviously, as this moves forward, the officers are going to become more familiar with the drivers. But that is a part of the plan to make sure that, you know, we're not just putting people in a vans without checking propriety.
Thank you for that. And then my last question has to do with parental involvement. As we kind of go through this process, we have one, two, three instances where a parent is not able to kind of pick up their child by a certain time. You know, the same child is out past curfew. What are the next steps? And I know DSS is one. I believe Senator Antonio Hayes was here to answer that question. But from a perspective of, from a perspective of the program, how do you all engage the parent and the family infrastructure so that they know that this is important and we're heading on four, five, and six times when we're seeing the same child out at night?
Yeah, I mean, I certainly appreciate the question. I mean, I do think DSS has been an active partner. And while I know there is typically a negative connotation associated with DSS, they are intended to provide those additional supports. So if they are able to engage with families, they would gauge, what is the need? Why is it that, you know, you're not able to get here, right? Like, I think our engagement with DSS, and this is, again, what anyone could or should do in the event that you think a child is in danger or being neglected, is engage DSS to help identify what services or supports are needed by that family specifically. So I think part of it is, you know, they have been an active partner and they're looking to support in whatever ways that families identify they need help.
Just a couple of other things here, if I could. So if we make a referral to DSS because we have a young person who didn't get picked up, we're going to have record of that, given the KPIs that we keep, that we've made a referral to DSS and that DSS picked up that young person. If that young person is someone that gets transported to the center again and we do a look-up, we're going to see that that young person had already been to the center before and had been referred to DSS. And so I would offer that while we're reaching out to the parent through the normal protocol, we're also reaching out to DSS, because at that point, that family has become DSS-involved.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the first question I had was identification of youth. One of the things that I know happens often is black children, particularly black boys, are often assumed to be older than they are. Is this a part of the training for both BPD and the outreach team on how to identify a young person or, because, you know, I looked at the BPD memo and in here, it says, upon observation of youth, they appear to be under the age of 17. I guess, how do you make that sort of determination, how old somebody is?
Happy to have BPD answer first about their training protocols and then to talk about the orientation tomorrow.
Councilman, I'm going to have to get back to you on this specific training in terms of that. And I know it's, for most of it, just experience when they're out there. Also, some of these young people may be known to BPD. Again, the real issue is, we aren't going to be asking them for identification. So it's going to have to be just based on their experience. I can get back to you on specific training that we may or may not do in the academy about how that happens. But I believe it's mostly just experience.
Yeah, and my concern is, because it, I guess, if they are, you know, assumed to be under 17, then there's the protocol to engage the social work team, there's the outreach team. But if the assumption is that they're older and they're gathering and, you know, whatever, loud music, whatever, they may be doing just on a summer night, the assumption would be that the officer would engage if they assume that they're over the age of 17. Is that correct?
Well, no, I mean, the engagement piece is really just the protocol. If we're talking about the summer months and we're looking at those hours and there's more than 10 people. So that's going to be where that comes in. But I'm sure BPD is going to err on the side of caution. If they believe that these to be people under the 18, they're going to call their supervisor and they're going to alert the situation.
Okay. Just making sure that that's a part of the conversation?
Yes.
Because I do appreciate the part of the strategy is to have as very few interactions as possible between law enforcement and young people. And just want to make sure that there aren't situations where assumptions are made that these young people are older than they are. Obviously, like, you can identify what the child looks like if they're 10 years old or something. You know, you're not, probably not going to confuse them for being 17, but
Absolutely.
You know, someone that's 16, 15 may look a little older and are often assumed to be older.
Yep.
And so that interaction escalates, has the potential to escalate.
And thank you for that.
Thank you. The other question I had is for, oh, actually, I'm sorry, I have another BPD question.
I should have taken a seat up here, I suppose.
Sorry, my bad. The, obviously, so there's this memo that goes out on the 26th, it looks like. What are the ongoing communication with district-level officers about this program throughout the summer? What does that look like?
So we're going to be communicating often with our partners. I mean, and that's, right now, I mean, we're just beginning. And I think it's a great start. But we're all going to have to circle back, figure out how this goes. We're going to have to work out the kinks. But yes, I mean, our officers are aware of it. It went out earlier. Our commanders, yeah, our commanders are aware, our district-level officers are aware. Our officers, we do have a system where when this memorandum goes out for the police commissioner, you actually have to go in, read it, sign it, so you can tell that it's been read. So it isn't as it's just been posted or spoken about. Everyone reads it. But that being said, absolutely, we're going to have to have continuing conversations with all of our partners as this goes forward.
Got it. Okay, thank you. That was my last BPD question. The other questions I had were for Wrexham Parks. The, and this was just like a small thing, and I brought it up on the call we had the other day about this, about marketing. One of the things that I think City Schools does pretty well is that each school has their own Instagram account. The community school coordinators have their own Instagram account. And so they're able to communicate directly with young people when things are happening at the school. One of the, I had talked to rec center staff for a while back about just, not just pertaining to this, but just generally like, how do we increase engagement at like the center? Because it just sort of felt like they were being underutilized. And one of the things that they noted was that they are not allowed to have individual social media accounts. And they felt that if they did, they could better communicate with the kids in the neighborhood that, hey, there's midnight basketball happening, or there's a video game tournament or something. You know what I mean, like that direct marketing of programming could be a draw for young people to want to better engage with the centers. Just throwing it out there, I know you probably don't, something to consider, don't need an answer right now. But like, I think that as it folds into this strategy, particularly at these two centers, it may be something that's particularly useful if a young person is not following the mayor's office or Mayor Brandon Scott. But they might be open to following the C.C. Jackson Instagram.
Yes, so we are currently considering that. The staff has shared that with us as well. So as we continue to grow our marcom capabilities and how we show up in the social media space, we are exploring being able to have more than just our one static Wrexham Parks page.
Okay. And then what are the types of age-appropriate activities? I've heard basketball a lot. I love basketball, as people know. But there are a lot of kids who are in the art, they're in the music, there are just other things beyond physical sport, video games. You know, what are the other things that I think would be featured at these two centers when they're operating?
Got you.
So you're asking about the youth engagement portion, not the summer programming portion?
Yeah, I understand the summer engagement is going to be sort of a diverse set of activities, but the day-to-day at C.C. Jackson and Reunited Church?
Yeah, I appreciate that. So we just started our supply/purchase specific for these programs. As I mentioned before, areas to sleep. And so making sure that we've got beanbag-like spaces and places for young people who want to sleep. We've also taken care of purchasing things like card games, solitary games, but also things like cornhole that can be played by any age- things like cornhole that can be played by any age group. We know that there are gaming systems there. We also have things like Simon and Connect Four and Jenga and those sorts of things. I think that, coming back to this change management piece, we want to see what our young people want to do. We want them to drive this. And so while we're starting with a baseline of supplies, we want to see what the interests of the young people look like coming into the centers so that we're able to make adjustments in real time. There are spaces and places in these recreation centers that also speak to individual interests. And so while all of them won't be open, for example, the C.C. Jackson dance studio won't be open at midnight, right? There are other spaces and places within each of these Wreck Centers that young folks will be able to take advantage of based on their interests, whether that be art, whether that be, you know, playing in a solitary way, or reading. You know, some of our young people are absolutely into reading and are geeks like me. So we want to make sure that we're being responsive there and intentionally not front-loading the supplies associated with this so that we're learning what our young people actually are interested in and not what we think they should be interested in.
Got it. My last question for this round, Mr. Chair. So what happens if, so you have the, say, there's a young person that's out, they think it's an excellent idea to go hang out at the Wreck Center, they get transported, you are able to get in touch with the parent, but the parent doesn't have transportation to pick them up? What happens in that scenario?
I love this question. Because we've been really thoughtful about that. We reach a parent, the parent says, I don't have a car, my car is broken down, I can't call somebody, it's 12 o'clock, it's 1:00, I don't know how I'm going to get my kid, can you just send my kid home? No, we can't just send your kid home because we need you to sign your child out, but we are willing to provide you with a lift from your home to that location so that you can sign your child out and to provide you and your child with a lift back. And so there has been a portion of the budget allocated specifically for that purpose.
Good thing. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to all the folks who are here this evening. And, you know, do want to recognize where you started, Director, which is that we have seen a vicious uptick in violence against our young people. And knowing that summers tend to be very violent in Baltimore, it is clear that we need an all-in strategy. And I know that this is part of a larger comprehensive plan. I will say two things that I appreciate about the approach and then share some questions and concerns. Number one is the intentionality around being trauma-informed, knowing that many of our young people are going to bring their trauma with them, whether they get on the van or not, that is coming along. And so having staff at all levels that are equipped to address it, I think is really important. And I'm glad to hear that that's programmed and part of what we're doing. And I also do appreciate that, you know, again, and knowing the partners that are here today, that this really is not an attempt to further criminalize kids for just being kids. My concerns are really around the fidelity of the program and wanting to make sure that it works. Specifically, I wanted to start by just asking about capacity, right? We know that in all of our city agencies, most of our city agencies' capacity is extremely constrained. I know that in Recreation and Park, Chief Smith and I have had this conversation several times before that folks are pretty burned out. And I think that's true in most of our city agencies. We have a shortage of police officers, we in DPW have shortages, we, folks are kind of at their wits' end. And this is pretty intensive, demanding work if we're talking about going up to young people who, as my colleagues have said, may not want to come along on this journey. The negotiation back and forth, the getting them there, the stress of like having a kid, a child with you that's on a van when they're at the center, what that piece looks like. Like, I could see this as being extremely stressful, difficult, challenging, emotionally taxing work for agencies that in some ways are already experiencing high degrees of burnout. I'm curious about how we're thinking about our own internal capacity to actually pull this off. Because what would not be good is if we did this and a bunch of our own folks quit because it's too much to deal with and we set ourselves up, as has happened in the lives of many of our kids, to fail. So I'm curious just how we're thinking about sort of the capacity and the wellness of the folks who are going to be tasked with pulling this off.
I'll start and then happy to have partners join here. I think we're being really thoughtful about it. It is one of the reasons why the initiative is being rolled out on the weekends first, with us assessing what this looks like as a full-time implementation, a everyday implementation as we get closer to the end of the school year. It is one of the reasons why we aren't asking folks to work continuously from 8:00 p.m. to 3:00 a.m. and offering folks the opportunity to take a shift if they are interested in taking a shift. We're asking folks who are interested in volunteering to volunteer first, right? And so, and a volunteer doesn't have to volunteer every single day. There is a team member on my team, for example, who's volunteering from 8:00 to 12:00 and only volunteering on certain days because that is what her current capacity is, given her day work. Other things that we are doing because we're being really thoughtful about...
Apologies. Could I just ask a question on that? So when we say volunteering, so not paid, so we're asking city staff to work additional hours unpaid?
So as the budget alludes to, there is a portion of the staffing that is being paid for work. And there are various ways that we can incentivize our team members who we aren't paying. Things like an alternate work arrangement. So given that you may work an 8:00 to 4:00 shift Monday through Friday, as long as your work isn't suffering, for example, what would it look like for you to work an 8:00 to 12:00 shift on curfew and then work an additional, work a four-hour shift during the day of that week? So not working additional hours, for example. I know that other partners have also instituted some incentive packages for their young, I'm sorry, for their team members around what this looks like. It also goes back to this change management meeting that we're having around checking in with folks because we're also asking the folks that are doing this work to provide us with anonymous feedback as well. We want to know what they are experiencing, not just in the work that they're doing to support our young people, but what they're seeing, what they're feeling, and what adjustments we need to make in order to account for the management of this strategy in ways that don't result in fidelity suffering. I think you had something here.
Yep. So also for us too, Wreckin' Parks, we've been very thankful that we have looked at this as a city issue, right? This wasn't something that came down that just one agency had to shoulder the burden of fully staffing the program. So as you can imagine, Councilman Cohen, in the very beginning, I lifted up concerns about capacity and what that would mean for not just our agency's employees, but the entire city's employees, just coming off of what I understand of the city's entire workload. So for us, we put it out as a volunteer signup to see what was going to happen, right? Are we going to have a bunch of holes that we need to recruit staff for? I think as a testament to the commitment of our team, we put the slots out, we had the folks voluntarily sign up for them. But for us internally, we're going to continue to monitor it. So in the first couple of weeks, we will not be in what we call our Super Bowl. We won't be in summer camp yet. So we anticipate that as we get deeper into the summer months, where our recreation staff in particular are fully engaged in summer camp, that if we do come to a place where it's harder to staff, that we would lean to our city partners and the volunteers that we are contacting now to make sure that we can go through the summer seamlessly. So it has been top of mind for the entire team, trying to figure out how we do a citywide approach, which I think is very unique about how we have approached this. It's not one agency who's doing the work. We've all come together, we've been meeting for weeks to discuss things that I see from my angle, things that Dr. Brooks sees from her angle, just to make sure that we kind of thought about the plan. The one thing I'm very excited about is that we built in change management. If we get to Week Two and something isn't working, we're committed to relooking at things and to make an adjustments as they come up. So right now, it feels good. It feels like we have a team that's interested in supporting this initiative. And because we have committed to these checkpoints, if we get to a place where capacity is truly an issue, I think we'll be able to ring the alarm internally to the team and then to the community to assist where we need to fill in those gaps.
And then just one last point here, in addition to what we heard the chief just mention, our partner at Public Schools hasn't just provided the names of four BCPSS social intake folks, even though we say that we only need two in each center. They've provided a comprehensive list of folks who have said, we want to be a part of this work. And so we aren't talking about using the same person day in and day out as it relates to this work. The same thing applies with our community-based partners and our social workers. We've created Flex there. So while we've got four peer ambassadors on buses, the contract isn't for four peer ambassadors. It is for at least twice as many of those so that young people, one, can have some life, right? And not working every single day across those hours, but also making sure that we're accounting for what might feel like an exhaustive work schedule.
And the thing that I'll add is, having had conversations with the partners, Heart Smiles, University of Maryland School of Social Work, one, individuals who are supporting are being compensated, so that is a part of the budget. But these folks were sincerely excited to be a part of this work and to be able to support the city, to be able to support young people in this way. And so, you know, having had conversations with Dr. Kay and Joni, you know, they have identified people in their organization that this is their bread and butter and this is what either they're training to do, or, again, many of the young people in the Heart Smiles have already been training and are already doing the groundwork.
No, appreciate that. And, you know, just for the record, huge fan of Heart Smiles and Youth Mental Health Alliance and Dr. Kay and Joni and all the folks that are doing that work. You know, it does make me a little concerned around the volunteer piece. I think that labor is labor and work is work and we should compensate people for their work. And I think this is going to be hard work. So I would just volunteer that to me, if we are asking folks, if we are seriously asking folks to do this, it should be compensated, it should be a job because it is one. I think alluding to sort of the line of questioning that Councilman Glover brought up, just thinking about my own district, thinking about Fells Point, which I know is one of the three spots that you mentioned, what we frequently see on the weekends is large groups of folks, some adult, some children, can be several hundred to 2,000, congregating in groups, often with alcohol, often with drugs. Because we live in the United States of America, too often there are guns. And so we have seen in the past shootings and even mass shootings because large groups are, they're congregating. My concern is, in just thinking about that scenario, which, again, we will likely see heading into the summer, we've seen it every summer, the efficacy of these folks to earnestly approach large groups of young people who may be drinking, who may be using drugs, and who may not. Because frankly, I think to Councilman Glover's point, I'm glad kids just come to a place like Fells Point or the Inner Harbor because it's nice there and it's the summer and it's warm out and there are cobblestones and there's water and it, you know, it's, if I were a young person or even an adult, that is a place I would probably want to be. But the challenge is, as we all know, unfortunately, again, we live in a country where, and a city where guns are far too prevalent. And so I just, I want to sort of just ask about, in the scenario where you got a group of mostly children that are drinking, that are hanging out, is that a scenario where folks will approach if there's marijuana, if there's drugs? Again, I know Councilmember Porter had asked about sort of the issues around substance use, but I'm curious just on that initial approach, because at that point, it is a legal activity. And so will it be BPD? Will it be the team, the social workers, the peers? Like, how do we think about that scenario? Because that will happen because it is happening.
Thank you for your question. And before I address it, want to just make sure I extend an invitation to all council members to also be a part of this work. So as we talk about, you know, making sure that capacity isn't an issue and really demonstrating to our young people that we're there for them, I would invite each and every one of you to have a conversation with regard to staffing a location for a shift and/or engaging in one of our static locations. Coming back to your question, Councilmember, I think folks know me to be an "and/both" person and not an "or" person. So in your scenario, yes, both BPD and Youth Connection Center staff would engage. Nothing that the Youth Connection Center staff would be doing would prevent BPD from doing its job associated with law enforcement. And so if there is criminal activity happening, we would expect them to assess the situation and to make sure that they walk through their duties as protocol dictates, whether that's associated with what you and I discussed during the briefing, is young people jumping on cars or destroying property or doing things that we know would require a BPD response anyway. Our Youth Connection Center employees would not be looking to have direct engagement in places and spaces where criminal activity is happening because we value the partnership that we have in BPD with regard to keeping us safe in that way. I would also offer that, and would invite my partner from BPD to come up and speak about this as well, but as a part of the identification of a crowd, we have been really clear in saying that we're talking about 10 or more people. And so if there is a crowd gathered, I would expect that BPD is more likely than not going to be the first to respond to a crowd and that they're going to be doing some level of safety assessment. And I can't speak to what their protocols are around a safety assessment. You were talking about mass shootings specifically to determine what their engagement would look like. And then making the appropriate calls to supervisors and making the appropriate calls to Youth Connection supervisors to make sure that we are engaging in ways that are thoughtful, that are rooted in partnership, and that, to the extent possible, guarantee the safety of everyone involved. And Erin, I didn't know if you wanted to add anything here.
The only thing I'll add is that, you know, BPD is aware, obviously, of what happens during the summer, youth or otherwise. And we have been in talks, especially in terms of Fells Point and the harbor and reaching out to other partners. We've been reaching out to the sheriff's office. We've been trying to be proactive and being prepared for this. So we're well aware of the crowds. But again, if BPD becomes a public safety situation, then the, this youth engagement piece, the public safety will take precedent, obviously. Thank you.
I appreciate that. And again, I think clearly there's a consensus that folks want this to work. I will count myself, to be honest, as a skeptic, but prove me wrong because the data that I have seen on curfews across the country is not compelling in terms of reducing youth violence. We, as Director, you and I spoke the other day, we've tried this in our city a few times and have not seen great results thus far. But I, like Councilman Glover, really hoping that this is an effective strategy and, you know, will, of course, support and ask hard questions. But thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the whole team that's here.
Thank you, Councilman. And I appreciate all your points. They're great ones. I was actually talking to Councilman Burnett here, and we might take you up on that offer and do some midnight basketball.
You signed up on the forums?
No.
Uh-oh.
You all might have signed up for summer programming. That is very different than the Engagement Center, while integrated.
I think, I think, I think we all want to see this successful. And I think, I think we all have our concerns about the actual rollout in the program and the effectiveness of the program. This is very tough to run and to run well. I have a couple of just quick questions, and I'll wrap up with mine after that. In thinking about our locations where we're going to enforce, we're enforcing in three locations. I want to find what those are.
I would say we're conducting curfew engagement across the entire city, but we have three static locations.
Got it. And in thinking about those three static locations, how do we choose those locations? Is that where we're seeing the greatest complaint, or is that where we see the greatest need?
It is where we're seeing the greatest need, based on what we all know to be anecdotally true, but also what we know to be BPD intelligence and community information on a regular basis. These are the three areas in the city where we consistently see the most gatherings of large groups of young people. Now, that won't prevent us from making sure that we're ready to mobilize when we learn about unpermitted events. Many of us know that Greenmount Avenue happens two, three times a summer. And so, we are anticipating that we'll be doing engagement there. And having the briefing with Councilwoman Ramos, she shared another location in her district that seems to be getting to have an uptick of large gatherings. And so, that's where the community information, coupled with the BPD intelligence, comes into play. And if I could, sir, just to speak about what studies have told us about the efficacy of curfews. What we know to be true is that, not just here in Baltimore City, but across all jurisdictions, the differentiating factor between what we're doing and what everyone else has done prior is that we've used law enforcement officers as the mechanism to enforce curfew. And so, while the studies have shown us that there hasn't been the level of efficacy that we would have liked to see in the past, I would offer that Baltimore City is doing something very different this time.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And noting we have static locations, but we are enforcing across the city, how are we enforcing in other areas outside of those three? What does that look like?
So, as I mentioned before, community information, in which we get information that we're seeing a crowd, right? And so, BPD and MONC did partner around the definition of a crowd in partnership with the acting solicitor, which is how we got to the 10 number, to identify where mobilizations from a dynamic perspective should happen. In addition to that, drivers associated with those two locations will be given a route to traverse on a regular basis across the city, so that we are also not missing out on one young person who is walking the street alone, or a smaller group of young people who are walking alone, because those are the ones that may be at a higher risk for harm or who need more social supports.
And I appreciate, so essentially, someone would call about a crowd. We see a crowd of young people, they call 311 or 911.
They would not call 311. MONC will have a dedicated curfew number that goes to, or does have a dedicated curfew number. Is it on the website? It is on our website, on our curfew page that we just launched while this hearing was happening. So, if folks want to give a call and they have identified a crowd, 10 or more young people, then we will make sure that during the curfew engagement hours, that we are sending out team members.
If I can make a recommendation, 311, 911, tried and true, and well-known across the city, it might be worth considering creating an option that at least notifies MONC through one of those mechanisms, just so that we don't miss things. And, you know, those are two.
We're happy to look into 311. We would never want to use the 911 system, given that it's for emergency response only, and we, and we're obligated to make sure that there is some sort of emergency response type associated with 911.
Great. And then, my last question here, noting that we are seeing gatherings, and I can think of one that continues to happen in my district. We're seeing older-than-18-year-olds gather. And I don't know if we thought much about this. And there may be older-than-18-year-olds, or older-than-17-year-olds, with those groups of 17-and-under folks. How are we thinking about those folks? Are they able to go through these rec sites? Are we keeping them separate for maybe very obvious reasons? Have we thought much about how we're going to handle those situations?
So, this question is an interesting one. I'm going to start and then lean into some partners here. The short answer is, it depends, right? So, if we see gatherings that are connected to unpermitted events, where we've got hundreds of folks who have gathered and who have closed off a street, or who have done something that hasn't gone through the DOT permitting process, and that's something that we become aware of, BPD has protocols associated with that as well. I do believe that the city administrator kicked off the first meeting today around summer coordination, to make sure that we understand what our intel tells us and what DOT tells us are permitted events that we shouldn't be, quite frankly, engaging in, because they've already done all of the paperwork necessary to secure all of the permits and/or street closure information for that particular activity. So, that's going to be one of the mechanisms that we use to engage. And in those cases, we may come across some folks who are under the age of 17 that we would meaningfully engage with. And at the same time, if these folks are with their parents or guardians, the curfew ordinance does not prevent them from being out, because they're under the supervision of someone that's a parent or a guardian. And so, we've got to play a really delicate balance there around what that looks like, while at the same time, making sure that we're enforcing permitting protocols.
Got it. Thank you. I have no further questions. Councilwoman Porter?
I have two additional questions. So, when a young person comes to the center, they're staying until the center closes. If they leave, you know, not if they leave, but what if they don't have a home to go home to? You know, can we talk through some of the protocols for teens that are experiencing homelessness? Or parents or families that are experiencing homelessness, what's the protocol?
Yes, this is a conversation that I think we had at the mayor's cabinet meeting in partnership with the director of the mayor's office of homeless services. We have also had this conversation as it relates to young people who identify as LBGTQ, who may be shelter insecure because of their micro-community involvement, right? And so, being really thoughtful about what that looks like, so that we aren't placing folks in harm's way by making sure that we create spaces that are safe enough for a young person to tell us what's going on with them. It is why we have an intake process. We could ask a young person, "Hey, assist them. This is the person that's identified as your parent or guardian." And Dr. D can kind of talk a little bit more about what this intake process will look like, but we're going to be really intentional about making sure that we aren't returning young people to places that are unsafe and that they essentially are trying to escape.
Yes.
And that's why they're out on the street. We have heard directly from the director of the Office of LBGTQ Affairs that a lot of our young people who are a part of that micro-community use the shadow that evening provides them as safety. And so, being, again, really thoughtful and trauma-informed with regard to what that engagement looks like. If a young person tells us that they are shelter insecure and/or don't have anywhere to go, then we do engage our DSS partners. But we're also conducting an intake in a way that makes us aware, to the extent that this young person is willing to share what's going on with their circumstance, so that we're not placing them in unsafe circumstances. And if they communicate to us that the whole family is shelter insecure, absolutely would make sure that we broaden all of the agencies necessary to provide the level of care folks need. Dr. D?
Yeah, I think Director Jackson covered a lot of it. Maybe one thing we have not mentioned is that, as a part of the intake, there will be a social needs screening to identify just that, right? Do you have access to food? Do you have, do you live in safe, affordable housing? And it's intended for the kids that are over 12 and deemed cognitively able, they would complete that screening. I think Director Jackson mentioned, for kids who are younger or may not be able to complete it, we are, you know, letting parents know that this is a part of our process. This is something that you can complete and return to us. Obviously, if they don't want to complete it at that time. But we do have the ability and will be screening children that are older and deemed cognitively able for social needs.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And I, you know, I definitely want to just highlight that particular issue, because I can see this being a shelter for our young people. And so, I want to make sure that we have something, short-term, intermediate, and long-term. Director Jackson, you know that's how I think, like, how we are providing for these young people and also their families as well. So, I'm glad to see that there's a social needs assessment. My second question actually has to do with the plain language aspect of this flyer. So, one of the issues that I have with this flyer, and I appreciate, I appreciate you all developing this flyer, it's very jargony. And it's not necessarily in the plain language aspect, you know, what if parents can't read? What if, you know, young people can't read, you know? And so, I want to make sure that we are distilling this information in a way that not only is, you know, from a language perspective, but also creates pictorial infographics that they can follow as well to communicate this information. And also, from a language barrier, if they're, you know, different languages and things of that nature.
So, thank you for that. It raises a couple of points for me. We are partnering with the Mayor's Office of Multicultural Affairs, who is recording a Spanish message tomorrow for delivery to Baltimore City Public Schools, to make sure that, as a part of the robocalling system, that that gets deployed. To your point with regard to, you know, educational attainment and making sure that the language is accessible through an eighth-grade reading level, I would offer a couple of points here. The whole host of communication mechanisms that we shared, right, around our young people doing videos on this, around Dr. D's voice on calls that are going out on 92Q and on WEAA, and hearing community members say what this curfew thing is and what community programming is and what it's not. In addition to that, your feedback, your thoughts activated a thought in me in that when we have a young person be picked up by a parent, we can absolutely include in tomorrow's orientation that this be read and/or communicated to them as they are picking up, with no exceptions, so that we aren't making any assumptions about literacy levels and, as a result, you know, leaving folks feeling isolated or targeted.
Exactly. And I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. The only reason why I bring that up is that I actually had a constituent bring that up to me with my palm cards. And they said, "I can't read this." You know, they were very open about their literacy. And so, I just want to make sure that we are encompassing everybody in the city of Baltimore and not necessarily using our educational biases sometimes to, you know, just give somebody this and say, "Here, read it." So, thank you so much, Director Jackson. Thanks so much, sir.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilman Glover.
Yeah, just have a couple of suggestions. Just wondering, you guys might have already done it, but are we having those groups engaged, like the We Are Us, and like the Uncle T's and all? Because these are the groups that are like right there where those individuals are.
They were at the press conference with us today. They are amongst the list of partners that we actually engaged and had conversations with and who are very much going to be a part of this work. Was just at Uncle T's Center a few weeks back and just met with Captain Mohammed earlier in the week, last week, to have conversations about what partnership looks like, not only around this, but also around some other initiatives.
Okay, that's one. And then, the last one is, what are we doing when we do get a young person and we're taking them home? And you know how sometimes, once that door's shut, a young person leaves back out that home? Do we have anything, like, in place for that young person that may leave? And at times, I'm going off of, you know, sometimes in the black community, and there's times, I know, even me being a young man, it's like, you know, you're not coming to my house at any time of the night. These are the consequences that we do have at home. And that young person is coming home because of, you know, the police, or you guys are dropping them off. But at times, you do hear the parents say, "He ain't coming back in my home."
So, just as a reminder, we aren't transporting any young people home. The police aren't transporting any young people home. This protocol requires a parent or guardian, or someone that they designate with a name, to come and pick up their young people and provide photo identification. Now, to your earlier point with regard to they go home and then they sneak back out at night, that's a completely different issue, right? And at the same time, it goes back to something that we talked about earlier around the travel distance from home. If you come back out and you're on your block, you're on your street, you're around the corner from your house, we aren't necessarily going to be trying to do curfew engagement with you in the same way that we would with a crowd of 10 or more young folks. But if we see folks out there that are stragglers, it doesn't mean that we won't have conversations with them. I would offer that the punitive consequences that a parent will have to face may become an incentive for a young person to not have their parent face that punitive consequence. The first one being that $50 fund and/or a requirement to go to counseling with your young person. And after a third engagement with a Youth Connection Center, a $500 fund and/or a community service for the parent, right? And so, we do believe that having all of those things in place is really what is going to drive our young folks to our summer programming places and spaces, because you get to stay out longer. You actually get to stay out longer, in many cases, past curfew, if you're in a safe place that is run by a city, like, sponsored program. And so, we do think that the integration of this strategy and us telling folks, "You want to hang out late at night? This way you go, like, go here. This is where we want you to be if you're going to not be home." So, I believe that those two, you know, contributing factors to this parental young person conversation after being picked up the first time will help kind of tamp the numbers down.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. The other quick question I had was, and I think you kind of touched on it, Director Jackson, resource referrals. And so, if a young person says, you know, "We need food," or "We need some other sort of thing," can you speak to what kind of work is being done to make sure that, whether those needs are, the parent shows up to pick the kid up, and they say, "Hey, do you guys have a referral for X, Y, Z?"
I'll start and then turn it over to Dr. D. A couple of the data indicators that we're capturing is, or are, has this young person communicated to us that they're connected to any service providers now? Any community-based organizations now? Do you, like, do you, are you connected with Heart Smiles? Are you connected with We Are Us? Are you connected with Roga? Are you connected with these sorts of places? So, not only are we providing referral information and then having, you know, our partners follow up post-the pickup, but also wanting to understand who they're already connected with, so that we are connecting with them to let them know that a young person that's connected with your program came through. And in that way, we embody what communal parenting is about, right? And kind of come in as many ways as we can. Dr. D?
No, I mean, I think you covered it. Obviously, you know, we see this model as including individuals who will be trusted messengers. But at the same time, we know many of these young people may already be engaged with other programming. And so, ideally, we're, you know, through our needs assessment, through the intake process, identifying that so that there is an additional safety net, right? Of they're already engaged with DSS or DJSS or some other system, so that we can also inform that system that's already working with them that this is a need that's also been identified.
Last question, the peer ambassadors, are they employees of MONC? Are they receiving compensation for their time?
So, the peer ambassadors are actually Heart Smiles or Heart Beats. So, it's the individuals that Joni has already trained. So, they've already, again, already engaging young people that will be on the ground.
Got it. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you. All right. We have no further questions. Anyone here to testify? I have two folks on this list. I've got Mark Cannon. Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Ms. Pat, please, you're welcome to come testify. You've got two minutes.
Hi, everybody. I love you all. My name is Pat. I'm the heart of Philly, but I'm from Baltimore. I went to Philly to get my heart back because I used to use drugs, and I ain't ashamed to talk about my game, but I'm back home now, and I think I talked with you, and you Emerson Village, right? And you Fells Point. But I wanted to share this with y'all with the curfew. I worked with the curfew center in Philadelphia for two and a half years. And what I'm trying to get you to understand, I had a stroke, so it's going to take me a little time to get it together, so I'm so excited. But what's happening is with the curfew centers, you have to give the kids something, and you giving them basketball, you know, all this stuff, and you giving them all that, and you giving them food. Some of these kids going to come because they have nothing else to do but get caught so they can come into the curfew center. But in the meantime, at the curfew centers, you got to get them some education. You got to get people that's going to help program their mind to make them become better. Because if you just giving this food and the games, they going to keep coming back. And then for the parents, like, I don't know what area your curfew center is going to be in, but you need to try to get the community to come out and talk with these kids. First of all, our kids don't have no respect, and we have to start teaching them how to show and give respect. Do y'all remember, I'm 63 years old, this not going to be on TV, I hope not, but I really don't care. I tell the truth, I don't care. You remember those silver pools we used to have that they put them up in the summertime? And the kids, we would go and go swimming, and after that light, them lights start flashing, we ran home. Do y'all remember that? Come on, y'all ain't that, that young. Y'all remember them silver pools?
You might, you might have me beat.
We should kind of try to get those pools put back up where the kids can start having fun. You Park and Recreation Center, I'm listening, right? You got that big pool out there in Jew Hill Park. We need to start trying to get the kids to come out there to swim, to be in Olympics. We got to give these kids something to strive for. You in Emerson Village, you got that, that rec center right there at Marbury and Franklin, 204, that people don't want to come to. You got a roller skate rink in there. That's where I grew up, grew up there. Get those kids and come in there, and then when you have these curfew centers, you're going to have to have one police officer there to protect that center. But when you got the parents to come out, I started this thing called Safe Car Doors, where the kids, my bikers, were, go get screened, get fingerprint, and get that real ID name on a badge, you know, like a little card, and they went into and walked around the schools when the kids got out of schools. And then when we had the curfew center, they was happy to be in there to talk with those kids like a big brother and big sister. We need to use people, I'm not saying use my bikes, but use people who have a compassion for these kids. I don't know, I'm not going to cry, but I might cry, but I, I care about these kids. We need people that knows how to restrain. Because see, these kids, I know me, I wouldn't do that. My mother beat me. But I'm saying, you know how you, you got, you say you got 10 kids, and here come the police, right? Here come the police. And like, you ain't taking me nowhere, you ain't taking me, put me where? I'm going home. And they would say, go home, and then before you notice somewhere else, you done got killed. You understand what I'm saying? So these kids are going to have a fight against a police officer when they come and say that you got to come with me because you done broke curfew. You understand what I'm saying? So you going to have a problem with that. And I talked to Harris when I first came here, I'm under Ramsey out of Philly. He knows my trainer up in Philly that trained me to do what I did with the police department in Philly. And I tried to do it here, and I told him five years ago, this was going to happen. See, when you, when people need to, okay, I know I talk too much, but I can't help it. I got to get it all out. But I did this. I bought Batman from out of Philly to go to 204, Murray E. Rodman, and he talked with those kids for two hours. We gave them gifts and stuff. We had no problems with those kids in the summertime. So what we need to do is start going into these elementary schools right now and start talking to these kids about the curfew, about what they should do, and how they should conduct themselves over the summer, and respect their parents. If we don't do it, these kids are our future. They're going to be banging us out here when we get old and can't walk and do nothing. So we need to start with the elementary kids right now with this curfew. I got a passion. I know you know me, you know, I'm cuckoo for cuckoo puffs, but I'm cuckoo for God's people, and these kids need to be saved, and we the only ones can do it right now. So I'm not trying to be smart to y'all. I, I give my hand to you and all of y'all for what you're doing in the city. I've been sitting back watching. I've been watching, seeing what's going on. Everybody talking about everything, but what they need to be talking about, talking about this and that. Y'all ain't doing y'all job, but it's not y'all job to do this. It's not y'all kids. We need to get these parents out here. Have you heard, when the last time you heard a PTA meeting? No PTA meeting for the parents can see about these kids. They not y'all kids. They not y'all kids. These parents are home watching TV. Let them go. I'm telling you, that curfew center is a beautiful thing to start, but you better get it right, because you know what? Them kids going like, I can eat, I can play games, and I know I'm safe. So I'm going to get caught. I'm where you at. I want it to work, and I'm do all I can to help you make it work. I'm going to get my bikers to come out there. If you like to screen them or whatever, they'd be happy. They already told me. Pat, we would love to be in the curfew centers to talk to these kids, because some of them was bad, some of them was drug dealers, now they going straight.
Ms. Pat.
And they can tell me the story, I'm going to be quiet, but you know what? Don't y'all forget about me, and I'm warning you on Fells Point, because you know I'm down there with them, right? But we need to bring people into the schools right now before these kids leave school and let them know what about this curfew.
Thank you.
You know what I mean? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I just can't help it. I got compassion for everybody.
We appreciate your passion.
So y'all know, I'm going to say what I got to say, and I don't care who like it or not. Get these parents and get them fines. That $500 ain't no problem. They can get that in two days. You know, you hit them with, hit them in their pocket where it hurts, and they keep the kids, and then you hit the kids where it hurt. Make the parents punish them. They messed up when they took, we couldn't beat our kids no more. I ain't going to say no more. That's where we messed up at, when you took the law from, then you got a beating.
Thank you, Ms. Pat. Ms. Pat.
Ask my question, I'm going to shut up. Did you get a beating? Did it hurt you? No, it made you who the man you are today, and that's what we need to go back to.
Thank you, Ms. Pat. Appreciate your testimony.
I talked to you too. Thank y'all, I love y'all. Y'all keep doing what people say.
Thank you. We appreciate you, Ms. Pat. Anyone else interested in testifying before we close up? If you are online and wish to testify, please use the raise hand function. Seeing no raised hands, we're going to close testimony. I want to thank you all for bearing this very short meeting. I'm kidding, it was not short. And thank you to city employees and all the time you guys put into pulling together a plan that is very thoughtful, and we really do hope that it works, and, you know, any support we can provide, we all are here for that. So, thank you. This hearing is in recess.